Before we do anything, I sadly report to you as my understanding that former mayor of Holden Beach, Norman Mears, is in hospice care. And as we turn our attention to item number one on the agenda invocation, time of silence, reflection, and personal prayer, maybe you consider keeping he, his family, and Mr. Mears in your thoughts and prayers. And with that, let's take a moment and pause. Okay, thank you so much, and we'll officially call the meeting to order. Welcome off to you and remind that those that might not be aware that in that corner, the northwest corner of this room, is a table with some information on it about this meeting, the agenda, and some more information to support what we're going to be doing here tonight. And thank you all for being here. And with that, let's look at number three, the pledge of allegiance. Let's stand and turn your attention to the flag, please.
(Inaudible)
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Number four on the agenda is the consideration of approving the agenda for the evening. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Foes say no, is unanimously approved. Okay, the minutes, number five on the agenda, the minutes for November 21st.
These will be approved.
Is there a second?
Oh, second, it's her.
Discussion here, none all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes say no, it's unanimous, minutes are approved. Number six, public comments on agenda items. I do have the list of people that have signed up. And the list has, number one, Mr. Michael.
How do you do?
If you will come to the podium, sir, give us your name and address and speak.
I do, this evening, y'all. New to the area, been here and there in April. I've visited down here with my sister-in-law and my brother-in-law many years. She spent most of the sixties down here, enjoying the fair and all of the amenities thereabouts. The populists down here, I believe, are just so kind and giving and caring. I can't think of a better community to still have joined with. Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate your time and energy. Let's hope we get some work on the pier done.
Thank you, sir, and welcome. Mrs. Surprise.
Hello, Maria Surprise, 159 OBE. First, to the outgoing commissioners, Judge Gerald Arnold and Brian Murdock, thank you for your service to the town of Holden Beach. And congratulations to the new and returning commissioners, Tom Myers, Rick Parfis, Tracy Thomas, Dr. Dyer, and Mayor Holden. I, I'm Maria Surprise, and I ran for commissioner because I believe that Holden Beach deserves an open, inclusive, and collaborative Board of Commissioners, and because it's time to improve our town's approach to planning, budgeting, communicating, and creating a long-term vision for what we want Holden Beach to be. This is still true, and it's why I'm opposed to awarding a contract for the pier tonight. I attended both the pre-bid meeting, and that included a walkthrough of the pier property with the contractors, and I also attended the bid opening conference. Based on, I really think it's clear that more work needs to be done before a contract can be let. The only two bids received, and there were more people that came, but they didn't bid, the only two bids received were millions of dollars apart, and the bid deemed the most responsive was the lower-priced bid. I have some concerns and questions regarding the disparity in the pricing and how that was addressed by our engineer. I believe that the public deserves to know more, and that the bid should be made available for review. So, instead of, I strongly urge the Board of Commissioners to table any action regarding the pier tonight, and instead, I would like you to convene a special meeting very soon, hopefully in January, to bring the public up to speed on the overall plan for the pier, where it stands today, and what the possibilities are for the future, including a summary of all costs incurred to date, as well as an estimate of what it will cost to deliver the overall plan. It's obvious to me that the pier in its existing condition is unsafe for the public, and to bring it into safety compliance in order to reopen to the public is going to be very expensive, at least double what it was originally budgeted for. Given the recent battering our shoreline took on Sunday, along with the necessary sewer uplift station work, we need to exert some fiscal responsibility and ensure that we have the funds needed to keep our beach and our utilities in excellent condition. And thank you for everything you've done to date for that. I do support finding a way forward with the pier property. It would be fantastic to have a beautiful spot for fishing and gathering with family and friends and neighbors, but I urge you to do this the right way, with clear and workable plans that adhere to a budget within our means. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Family?
My name's Mike Felmy, I live in Carolina Avenue of Holden Beach. I'm here to address item 16 on the agenda. I, like many, have been frustrated with this white elephant referred to as the pier. It was purchased, in my opinion, by several self-serving individuals who cried wolf that some developer would come to town and put houses or condos on the land. So, I asked myself, look what's going up now. As some background, the town went to Raleigh to get approval to buy the land and the pier. According to The Beacon, they use a change.org survey convinced in Raleigh, deemed that the town residents wanted to buy the land with the pier. Anyone on the internet can vote for change.org. When in fact, the Holden Beach Property Owners Association surveyed the membership and voted 60-40 not to buy the pier and land because either there was no strategy or plan for the purchase, no money in our account to do so, or they downright opposed it. Further, in a similar story, the board voted to apply for an accepted part-of-grant from the state and applied the purchase to the land, approximately three acres, which means that the land with the pier has been turned over to the state in perpetuity. Everybody know what that means? Forever. Further, it obligated the town to build recreational facilities on the property by, I believe, within five years. So, here we are, stuck between a rock and a hard place. The town has obligated us taxpayers not only to mortgage over $2 million for state property, but we must pay to build recreational facilities. Now, we have over $3 million invested in three acres on which the pier sits, and now the board may want to invest a million dollars in a pier which provides significantly greater benefit to off-island residents and visitors rather than property owners. From my extensive experience funding repairs, pier repairs, and construction in an area, this will only be the beginning of our repair investment. The most frustrating issue for myself and many others is the board has refused to task the town manager and his staff to develop a strategy with a vision for which I now refer to as the Holden Beach State Park. If we, the taxpayers, if not we, the taxpayers, to which, to fund a true strategy and not cherry pick one of Holden Beach's currently developed plans. Once a plan is developed, then maybe we can become one of the recipients of Tom Tillis' infrastructure law where Holden Beach received nothing. Asheville Airport receives $35 million to repair a 61-year-old air traffic control tower. Topsail Inlet connecting channels received $520,000 in its infrastructure. It is the infrastructure law that keeps on giving and we're not included. So much for our $100,000-a-year lobbyists. There must be a strategy from which the town can develop a plan and fund the park within our financial constraints before any current contract is awarded. A written survey will also help us hold town leadership accountable. I recommend any contract award in Holden Beach until the responsible town strategy is developed. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Family. Ms. Pierce?
I just wanted to speak on behalf of this community. I work in Charlotte at a local business there, and anytime you run into someone, the same question you hear is, are they, when is the pier opening back up? It's not, you know, is it opening, or when are they getting rid of it, or, you know, what's happening? It's always, when is it opening? It's anticipation. There are so many people who come and visit, I meet them off the beach, I meet them again in the community, and they've spent years and years with their families, and they want to see this to be the continued family beach that they've known, that they raised family there, how they grew up, and they want that to continue going on. And I feel like that's a big part of community, and I'd like to see it kept that way, as I think many people would. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pierce?
John Pierce, 123 Burlington. I'm going to read this to stay on task, something I don't do usually. Simply put, I support the pier property restoration, as well as, as well as other initiatives which contribute to the preservation of this island's history, culture, as a family beach. While I'm sure that we much said tonight and down the road about how we cannot financially afford these impactables, and that's already started, of course, I stand here to say to you, and to both outgoing and incoming board members, that we rather cannot afford to lose these impactables. Money can be saved, managed, project scope, negotiations, creative, public, private, partnering, we all know that, if we're honest. But if we lose our heritage, we can never regain it in future generations, we just can't. So, in light of the comments I've heard tonight, and over the recent past, from homeowners and business owners alike, I'd like to use the remaining time to make an announcement that will interest and benefit us all, and I mean all. There are efforts currently underway that have created a nonprofit organization whose purpose it will be to preserve and promote the history and the heritage of the greater Holden Beach community. It is my hope they will address, among other initiatives of interest to the community, the preservation and restoration of the Holden Beach fishing pier property. Furthermore, it's my understanding they are eagerly awaiting the first opportunity to begin their endeavors. One idea I've seen circulated is this, since we have no centralized place in the community where someone can easily learn about all the rich heritage of Holden Beach, perhaps some type of museum would be appropriate. It might even make sense to establish such a venue at the pier property using new technologies like kiosks, QR codes, AR, augmented reality, for the younger of us. Or maybe the museum could be on the menu. In any case, I'm sure we all want to get involved in documenting our history and preserving our culture for future generations, which is what heritage is all about, and which many of us move here for. We should all look forward to hearing more of this nonprofit's plans to preserve the rich heritage of Holden as it's formally rolled out in the new year. In closing, I trust we won't be feud kindly when history of Holden Beach is written, and not as those who oversaw the demise of such an important part of our heritage as the Holden Beach fishing pier, especially when it comes to, it was too costly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pierce. Mr. Bauer?
Jim Bauer, 329 Ocean Boulevard West. The pier in the fog, we didn't want the commissioners to buy it, it was purchased anyway. We didn't want the part-of-grant, and that went through as well. When the townspeople were given input, it was mostly ignored. You operate it in a fog. The fog seems to shift back and forth, blown by the wind. Sometimes the commissioners can't see it, sometimes we can. We move forward in the fog, but there's never a plan. There's never a course. In September 2022, Hurricane Ian came ashore and temporarily interrupted the operation of the Greensboro lift station. Surely, one quarter of the town not having septic facilities is much more important than the pier. But the fog crept in. The lift station was mentioned at some meetings, forgotten in the following ones, all disappearing into the fog. Why should we worry about something more important when we can worry about the pier? More fog, more consultants, more surveys, more talk, more pie in the sky. Some meetings, even the pier disappears into the fog. There are facts that the fog can't obscure. The pier is 15 years older than its 50-year service life. That's 130% of its service life. It's a pile of sticks that no one really cares about, other than who would profit from being kept on life support for the next few years or decades, or some other personal benefit or promotion. It will certainly be an albatross around our necks, taking money from other more important projects, like the lift stations, the beach, and the other must-have infrastructure projects, until a storm destroys it, as nature eventually does, to all other wooden piers. They're the facts, not the fog. Now, fog-bound, now fog-bound, we are moving ahead with accepting bids for the pier, with no plan. What's the urgency? I urge the commissioners to put an immediate stop to consideration of any and all work of this kind on this junk heap until the townspeople, and the townspeople only, can openly review the past engineering surveys, all other documentation, and, and very importantly, the cost to date, and then listen to the townspeople, and only the townspeople, what they have to say. Not some silly survey, open to everyone, where anyone that's ever visited Holden Beach can have a say. That's ridiculous. And after that, and before not another dollar is spent, clear out the fog and make a plan. Lastly, in closing, does it seem to be that there's a big, a lot more of a belly to the pier after the storm on Sunday? That's the way it looks for my house. Thank you.
I'm not on the agenda.
Number seven?
I'm sorry. I thought you were calling on me for public comment.
(Laughter)
All of us?
I didn't do.
All of you.
That way Chris can go.
You too, ma'am.
Yep, all of us.
What do you want us to do?
If you want me to come to the bill, we'll present the plaque.
Where you want me?
All of you, right in the middle. Thank you.
Mayor and outgoing commissioners, it's not, it's my duty to present you with the outgoing plaque that reads Town of Holden Beach admission. Town of Holden Beach Board of Commissioners, December 21 through November 23. Mayor Gerald J. Allen Holden. Commissioners Gerald Brown through July 22. Brian Murdock, Rick Smith, and Paige Dyer. Patrick Hester Design, March of 23. And Judge Arnold, March of 29.
That it?
All right.
We're going to keep going.
Yes, so if the mayor and Commissioner Arnold would like to stay up here.
Judge Arnold?
I've been here since the town founded in 1969, and of all the people that have done so many wonderful things, Judge Arnold has been a visitor, his family, property owner here since the 40s, and including myself, I don't know of anybody that has more credentials in the state of North Carolina than Judge Arnold, the highest court in the land. He was the head of the border testes of East Carolina, the county university list, it goes on and on, and I hope that the people of Holden Beach realize how fortunate we have been to have his service, his knowledge, and skills, and to that serve. I have to tell Holden Beachers, our towners and citizens, thank you so much for what you've done.
The next part is commission, this board's comments. So, if anybody wants to make comments, otherwise we can move to the oath of office, completely up to you guys, but it's comments, isn't it? Yep, if you guys want to.
You're in charge.
Just the normal comments, like at the end of the meeting.
Excuse me? There was a sign-in sheet for people to, if they made comments, my name was on there, I have to knock on.
Have you been to the third one down, King Road?
My apologies to you, sir. If you'd like to come speak, I'm sincerely sorry.
Sure, why not?
I do need, maybe I do need glasses.
You can have mine.
Sorry to disrupt things, but I'll keep this quick.
No, it's my fault.
Again, speaking about the pier, a lot of things have been said about the way things are going forward with the pier, and I would just emphasize that I personally, I've seen a lot of things out there, but I have not seen a vision, an end state for the pier property. And it seems irresponsible to me to go forward piecemeal, either with fixing the pier, or any other thing with that property, until we have an approved by the commission, by the people of the town, plan for that space. So, it doesn't make sense to me to pick one of these bids and go forward if in the end that's not going to be, wouldn't fit with the plan that we come up with in the end. So, I would just urge the commission to focus on what is the end state for that property, and then we can work. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Again, I apologize, that was my personal mistake. All right, back to you, Madam Clerk.
Commissioners' comments, if anybody would like to make outgoing comments.
Mr. Smith?
Well, I would like to personally thank Judge Arnold. It has been a pleasure to work with you, your calm demeanor, and your experience with boards like this has been a, has been a big help to me. It's made me a better commissioner, and I really do appreciate your time here with us. I also would like to thank Brian Murdock. His heart was in the right place. He absolutely loves this island and loves the people that live here with us. So, I just wanted to thank Judge Arnold and Brian Murdock for their service, and we just still don't want to forget about Gerald Brown. While he was here, he was, he was definitely an asset to this board.
Dr. Dyer?
I want to thank Judge Arnold and Brian for their service. It was a pleasure serving on this board with you guys. Learned a lot from both of you, and your passions for the town were clearly visible, and enjoyed serving with you. And as Rick said, we miss Gerald. I sat next to him when I first started, and he gave me a lot of insight, and he's dearly missed still, and he gave a lot to the town, and his heart was in the town as well, too, so he's dearly missed. Thank you.
Judge?
Well, these are always fun times, you know, the hyperbole, you appreciate the kind words, and I do. I've been privileged to serve in law, and politics, and business, and government for over 50 years, and I don't have enough room for all the plaques that I've been given, not because I've exhibited any great competence, but when you serve, but if you come to my house and my study, you'll see one on the wall, and it'll be this one. Somebody said a long time ago, you never get lost on a road if you remember where you started. This is one of the places, Holden Beach, where I started, with my family. It means a lot to me to be here. I guess the best part of my professional career has been the undeserved benefit I've received in getting to know and work with people that I've known and worked with, and I'm, I'm eternally grateful for it. Mama used to say, you are known by the company you keep. I've been in some pretty good company. I hope she was proud. I've loved serving on the board, and I wish I could have had a longer stint than I have, but I'm sort of like Dr. Seuss. I'm not going to be sad that it's over, I'm going to be happy that it happened. I cherish your friendships. Those I don't know, I offer my friendship to you. If I can be of service at any time, I appreciate what you do more than words can tell you. I thank you. God bless, and I know he will.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Gerald.
Thank you, Judge Arnold.
Heather?
We would like to do the oath of offices, one by one, so if you want to start out with you.
I've got two lovely ladies.
Two lovely.
And ladies are here to help me through this. These young ladies have been representing Holden Beach statewide in swimming events and swimming.
All right, Mr. Bear, raise your right hand, and great support you have on your left. Do you, J. Allen Holden Solomon sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or which may be established by the government thereof, that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of this state, not inconsistent with the laws and Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as mayor. So help you God.
I do and will.
Congratulations. Thank you for that. (Inaudible).
And then if we could have Tom Myers come to the front, please?
Would you give a little something to write?
(Inaudible).
If you are ready to take your oath, assume the position, put your left hand on the paddle. Do you, Tom Myers, Solomon sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, and to the constitutional authorities which are or which may be established by the government thereof, that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of this state, not inconsistent with the Constitution and laws of the Constitution of the United States, all to the best of your knowledge and ability, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as commissioner. So help you God.
I do. All right.
Congratulations.
And then we need Tracy Thomas, please.
Thank you.
Tracy Thomas? Assume the position. You're going to assume your oath. Do you, Tracy Thomas, Solomon sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, and that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, to the constitutional authorities which are or which may be established by the government thereof, that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of this state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, and that you will faithfully discharge your duties as office and your office as commissioner. So help you God.
Thank you, and I will.
Congratulations.
(Applause). And then we need Tracy Thomas, please.
Thank you.
Tracy Thomas? Assume the position. You're going to assume your oath. Do you, Tracy Thomas, Solomon sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, and that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, to the constitutional authorities which are or which may be established by the government thereof, that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of this state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, and that you will faithfully discharge your duties as office and your office as commissioner. So help you God.
Thank you, and I will.
Congratulations.
(Applause). And then we need Tracy Thomas, please.
Thank you.
Tracy Thomas? Assume the position. You're going to assume your oath. Do you, Tracy Thomas, Solomon sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, and that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, to the constitutional authorities which are or which may be established by the government thereof, that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of this state, not inconsistent with the Constitution and laws of the Constitution of the United States, all to the best of your knowledge and ability, and that you will faithfully discharge your duties as office and your office as commissioner. So help you God.
Thank you, and I will.
Congratulations.
(Applause). And then we need Tracy Thomas, please.
Thank you.
Tracy Thomas? Assume the position. You're going to assume your oath. Do you, Tracy Thomas, Solomon sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, and to the constitutional authorities which are or which may be established by the government thereof, that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of this state, not inconsistent with the Constitution and laws of the Constitution of the United States, all to the best of your knowledge and ability, and that you will faithfully discharge your duties of your office as commissioner. So help you God.
Thank you, and I will.
Congratulations.
(Applause). And then we need Tracy Thomas, please.
Thank you.
Tracy Thomas? Assume the position. You're going to assume your oath. Do you, Tracy Thomas, Solomon sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, and that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, to the constitutional authorities which are or which may be established by the government thereof, that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of this state, not inconsistent with the Constitution and laws of the Constitution of the United States, all to the best of your knowledge and ability, and that you will faithfully discharge your duties of your office as commissioner. So help you God.
Thank you, and I will.
Congratulations.
(Applause). And then we need Tracy Thomas, please.
Thank you.
Tracy Thomas? Assume the position. You're going to assume your oath. Do you, Tracy Thomas, Solomon sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, and that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, to the constitutional authorities which are or which may be established by the government thereof, that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of this state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, and that you will faithfully discharge your duties as office and your office as commissioner. So help you God.
Thank you, and I will.
Congratulations.
(Applause). And then we need Tracy Thomas, please.
Thank you.
Tracy Thomas? Assume the position. You're going to assume your oath. Do you, Tracy Thomas, Solomon sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, and that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, to the constitutional authorities which are or which may be established by the government thereof, that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of this state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, and that you will faithfully discharge your duties as office and your office as commissioner. So help you God.
Thank you, and I will.
Congratulations.
(Applause). And then we need Tracy Thomas, please.
Thank you.
Tracy Thomas? Assume the position. You're going to assume your oath. Do you, Tracy Thomas, Solomon sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, and that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, to the constitutional authorities which are or which may be established by the government thereof, that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of this state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, and that you will faithfully discharge your duties as office and your office as commissioner. So help you God.
Thank you, and I will.
Congratulations. to the best of your knowledge and ability, and that you will faithfully discharge your duties as office in your office as commissioner, so help you God.
I do and I will.
Congratulations.
And then we need Paige Dyer, please.
Thank you. Paige Dyer? Do you, Solomon sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, and that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, to the constitutional authorities which are or which may be established by the government thereof, that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of this state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, all to the best of your knowledge and ability, and that you will faithfully discharge your duties as office in your office as commissioner, so help you God.
I do and I will.
Congratulations.
And then we need Paige Dyer, please.
Thank you. You're welcome. Assume the position. You're going to assume your oath. Do you, Tracey Thomas, Solomon sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, and that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, to the constitutional authorities which are or which may be established by the government thereof, that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of this state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, all to the best of your knowledge and ability, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as commissioner, so help you God.
I do and I will.
Congratulations.
And then we need Paige Dyer, please.
Thank you. Tracey Thomas. Assume the position. You're going to assume your oath. Do you, Tracey Thomas, Solomon sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, and that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, to the constitutional authorities which are or which may be established by the government thereof, that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of this state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, all to the best of your knowledge and ability, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as commissioner, so help you God.
I do and I will.
Congratulations.
And then we need Paige Dyer, please.
Thank you. Tracey Thomas. Assume the position. You're going to assume your oath. Do you, Tracey Thomas, Solomon sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, and that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, to the constitutional authorities which are or which may be established by the government thereof, that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of this state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as commissioner, so help you God.
I do and I will.
Congratulations.
And then we need Paige Dyer, please.
Thank you. Tracey Thomas. Assume the position. You're going to assume your oath. Do you, Tracey Thomas, Solomon sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, and that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, to the constitutional authorities which are or which may be established by the government thereof, that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of this state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, all to the best of your knowledge and ability, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as commissioner, so help you God.
I do and I will.
Congratulations.
And then we need Paige Dyer, please.
I can't wait for it.
Hi.
Assume the position.
Yes, sir.
Put your right hand. Do you, Rick Parfus, Solomon sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, and to the constitutional authorities which are or which may be established by the government thereof, that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of this state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, all to the best of your knowledge and ability, and that you will faithfully discharge your duties as office in your office as commissioner, so help you God.
I do and I will.
Congratulations.
And then we need Paige Dyer, please.
Thank you. Good news is, I don't have a lot to talk about in the police world, so we just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. If you celebrate, get a ride, Uber, family, don't drink and drive, we'll have officers watching. We're like Santa Claus, we're always watching. But that's, that's all I've got. If you've got questions, comments, or concerns on the report itself, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
I've got a question. Can I ask a question? Okay. I apologize, I'm trying to learn these reports. A couple of things jumped out at me on the calls, namely armed robbery, kind of shocked me, breaking and entering in progress. It seems like these are the calls?
Yes.
And then the monthly report has more of the resolution, whether somebody was arrested or, so I'm just curious about those. They didn't, they showed up here or not there? Were they?
Correct. So, so on those, and there's about 600, I think, on this report or so?
Yeah, 660.
Yeah, yeah. It's just the armed robbery kind of jumped out at me in terms of.
Correct. So, and that's, that's how the call was dispatched, and when the officer got there, it may not have been an armed robbery at all, it may have gotten coded wrong. This particular one, I don't know the details. I could find out and bring it back for the next meeting, but I don't know that particular call individually. I don't remember any of the officers reporting an armed robbery. If they had, obviously, it would have been in the next page where we did the actual incident reports, where you can see the resolution there.
Okay, that's basically what I was trying to figure out.
Right, that's, that's correct. Where we had like the misdemeanor lawsuit, if we had an armed robbery, as that was dispatched there, then it would have been logged in that next call log as an armed robbery. That's not something we would have just went to and closed out, wished them the best of luck, and moved on. Something like that has, has mostly gotten probably coded wrong when it got put into potential.
Okay.
But I can, I can find out the details on that.
Well, if it's real, yeah, I'd like to know.
Yeah, oh yeah. I can just about guarantee that it's not real, it would have been a report filed for it, but I'm actually curious now as to how it got logged. So I'll look it up myself as well.
Okay, because it seems like the armed robbery would bring my attention, and breaking and entering, that's a hot topic this time of year.
Yes, and we do get a lot of those calls, and that armed robbery could have been the same thing, B and E calls. We have them where construction workers are working on a house, cleaning crews, and the neighbor does.
The board is required to adopt rules of procedure. The current version the board is using is included in the board's packets for their review. The board may adopt these rules as written or make amendments to them. There's also a version that the School of Government used to do that I could provide the board. You could adopt them today. You can decide to defer it to January or another month. It's completely up to the board.
Well, it's your pleasure.
So, I'd like to make a motion to have a special meeting December 28th or whatever works for everyone before January 4th to go over a new rules of procedures. I have some changes that I'd like to propose at that special meeting. So, I can propose an actual date, Heather? Or you want to offline poll people to see when they're available?
Town halls closed 25th, 26th, and 27th.
Yep.
So, I'm sorry, you said before, what was the date you said?
I said the 28th to the January 4th.
I'm not going to be available. I'll be there sometime in January, but not in December.
You can do January 2nd, 3rd, 4th?
I don't have a town hall schedule.
We'll have to check our schedules.
Right, so you want to check their schedule and let us know when the majority can meet?
Absolutely.
Between those dates, and then I'll give you my proposed agenda and the proposed rules of procedure.
And what's the special meeting for?
To make some changes to the rules of procedure.
Can we not place this as an agenda item for the January meeting?
I'd like to do it before the January meeting because I'd like to have the new rules of procedure in place before then, before that meeting.
Should we not discuss it at that meeting and approve it then?
That's not my motion. My motion is to have it sometime between now and January 4th.
Well, we've got a motion on the floor, so keep procedure in line. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, now discuss it more if you like.
Again, this is, you know, special meetings are, we have a, we all have our own schedules. And again, especially at the first of the year, you know, we've moved the regular meeting, which we took some juggling to get that done. I would, really don't see any need in having a special meeting when you do it during a regular meeting.
I mean, I just repeat, I'd like to have it in place before we have that regular meeting, the new rules of procedure. And if we can get the majority of people together during that timeframe, then I'd like to have a special meeting.
Is there a reason that you want to do it by the 4th, or do you think maybe further we can? Just asking, I don't know if that would help people, but...
Because we changed the meeting, I probably could go a few days later because I wanted to have it in place before we needed to have everything...
On the agenda.
Correct.
Gotcha.
So, now that we changed that a week, it could probably go out a little bit into the following week.
I'll solicit and then...
Okay.
Madam Clerk, you're going to poll members? Is that what we're doing?
Yes, sorry, but I think I jumped ahead because there wasn't a vote yet. But yes, I can solicit.
Yeah. Okay, so we still have a motion and a second, so... Would you consider withdrawing your motion?
No.
Okay.
I mean, I still want to have the special meeting. I've given...
Would you call for the motion?
What was the motion? Oh, yes. Close question?
Yes, ma'am. All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to the motion, say ah.
No.
You would normally be right, I'm just trying to trick. Okay, the motion carries. And the motion carried...
Oh, this is...
Madam Clerk, would you read the motion that carried back so there would be no mistake about understanding what it says?
To schedule a special meeting, I'm sorry, I don't have it word for word, to schedule a special meeting between now and Janu-, well, we said January 4th, but...
It can stretch into the next week, yeah.
I thought it was the 28th.
December 28th, January 5th, 6th, 7th, 8th, 9th, 10th.
That's the reason I wanted the motion read because I'm...
Okay, let's say the 10th, January 10th, December 28th to January 10th, whenever we can get a majority.
I can't do it that way.
So...
What's the motion? We've got to vote on what the motion is. And the motion was, the original motion, as I understood, was the 28th.
No, the motion was to have a special meeting between December 28th and January 4th.
Aye.
And now you say it's going to be when?
Aye, so the 28th of December and January...
Fourth.
Fourth. Okay.
So, can I...
So, that motion has been voted on and approved?
Through the 4th, yes, but it's, in order to have a special meeting, it's going to have to be the mayor pro temp, two commissioners, or the mayor to call it since it's not being set in a meeting. So, honestly, I'm not sure. I'll solicit. I think the best way to go forward is I'll solicit through the 10th, and then we'll have to have the mayor pro temp, the mayor, or two commissioners call a special meeting for whatever date we can come up with.
Sure.
That work? Okay.
Okay. What have we got to do to unwind the motion that just passed?
Well, she might be able to do the motion.
I'll solicit, it just won't be able to be called based on the motion. I'll solicit for the dates in the motion, but we can't call a special meeting without going through that procedure, having to...
And what do I need again for the special meeting?
To call a special meeting, it just, it has to be in writing. It has to be either a mayor, mayor pro temp, the mayor, or two commissioners can put it in writing.
Okay. No problem. You solicit for me, then I'll give it to you in writing.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Are we clear to move on now, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Chief Dixon?
Good news is, I don't have a lot to talk about in the police world, so we just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. If you celebrate, get a ride, Uber, family, don't drink and drive, we'll have officers watching. We're like Santa Claus, we're always watching. But that's all I've got. If you've got questions, comments, or concerns on the report itself, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
I've got a question. Can I ask a question? Okay. I apologize, I'm trying to learn these reports. A couple of things jumped out at me on the calls, namely armed robbery, kind of shocked me, breaking and entering in progress. It seems like these are the calls?
Yes.
And then the monthly report has more of the resolution, whether somebody was arrested or, so I'm just curious about those. They didn't, they showed up here or not there? Were they...
Correct. So, on those, and there's about 600, I think, on this report or so? It's 660.
Yeah, yeah, it's just the armed robbery kind of jumped out at me in terms of...
Correct. So, and that's how the call was dispatched. And when the officer got there, it may not have been an armed robbery at all, it may have gotten coded wrong. This particular one, I don't know the details. I could find out and bring it back for the next meeting, but I don't know that particular call individually. I don't remember any of the officers reporting an armed robbery. If they had, obviously, it would have been in the next page where we did the actual incident reports, where you can see the resolution there.
Okay, that's basically, I was trying to figure out was...
Right, that's correct. Where we had like the misdemeanor larssnay, if we had an armed robbery as that was dispatched there, then it would have been logged in that next call log as an armed robbery. That's not something we would have just went to and closed out, wished them the best of luck, and moved on. Something like that has mostly gotten, probably coded wrong when it got put in potentially.
Okay.
But I can find out the details on that.
Well, if it's real, yeah, I'd like to know.
Yeah, oh yeah, I can just about guarantee that it's not real, it would have been a report filed for it, but I'm actually curious now as to how it got logged. So, I'll look into that myself as well.
Okay, because it seems like the armed robbery would bring my attention, and breaking and entering, that's a hot topic this time of year.
Yes, and we do get a lot of those calls. And that armed robbery could have been the same thing, B and E calls. We have them where construction workers are working on a house, cleaning crews, and the neighbor doesn't recognize the cleaning crew, and they call in a B and E in progress, and the officer gets down there and gets the cleaning crew. We've had B and E calls on the realty companies. I mean, it's just, so those don't surprise me at all. We've not, we are not having a string of ongoing B and Es right now. And that armed robbery call very likely could have been the same thing. Somebody could have called it in, that hey, they're robbing the house, and it could have been a cleaning crew. I don't know, so I can find that out.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thanks, Chief Dixon.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Evans?
For all, for all those you won't see again, Merry Christmas. As usual, we've stayed steady over in the inspection department. I'll read the bottom part of the report for active new home permits. We have 35. We actually have six that are ready to go out at this time. There's, for the other active permits, there's 252 of them. For permits that's issued over 30,000, there's exactly 30 as of today, I mean, as of the day of this report. Permits issued over 100,000, there was three of them. Permits issued waiting for pickup was 21. The total permits are 308. Permits in review at the time of this report was 16. Cammas that have been issued for the month were 14. Zonings that were issued were 17. Permit service for inspections were 79, and total inspections made were 270. There's no real big number there that jumps out, it just, it's just... Every day.
Any questions, Commissioner? Thank you, sir.
TM, I'd appreciate it if you would continue to go through the ordinances and try to make any corrections on any contradictions, please.
All right, we're on number 16, Ms. Ferguson? Or did I skip over something?
Hold on. I'm getting worried. I was excited, I was ready to go.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the members of the new board. Before you this evening, we have to consider the pier Phase 1 project. The town did receive two bids at the second scheduled bid opening for this phase, Paragon Building Corp. and TD Ure. The most responsive bid appears to be Paragon at $2,197,181. This has been certified by the architect who is in the audience tonight. The previous board's goal and direction was to try to see the pier opened for the season. So, based on contracting and procurement guidelines, there are three options issued here for you. Certainly, the board does not have to entertain those, but the first will be to award the bid and direct the staff on the preparation of a budget amendment for the shortfall. The staff is not recommending this. Direct staff to engage in value engineering and negotiation with Paragon to incrementally reduce the scope of work to better align with existing budget appropriations. Or direct staff to engage in value engineering to reduce the scope of work and totally rebid the project.
Ms. Christie, I see we have Chip in the audience here with us tonight, and I think the best direction for us to go possibly would be to get, direct the staff to engage with Chip to see if we couldn't engage in some value engineering to reduce the scope of the work and totally rebid the project. Again, we pretty much, the previous board pretty much put down a, what we had budgeted, and that was, it was, like you say with your number shares, a million dollars, and that went over it considerably. And in speaking with him, there is a way to possibly get this done and the pier safe to operate soon if we go back and do some, engage in some value engineering to get this within our scope.
Can we get some input from Chip by any chance?
Does that, does that do with everybody? Does let Chip speak?
Sure.
Chip Hemingway, Bowman Murray Hemingway Architects in downtown Wilmington. Can you take questions or...
Well, can you give us some, some of your insight on where we sit with these options? And you know where we're standing with where we wanted to get the pier open and what our budget restraints were and everything, and we've, our bids have come in, we've got two bids, one, $2 million apart, and I think we need some input on...
Okay, well, there are a lot of factors with the bids. The thing I can talk about, which concretely is the scope of work, I guess. We had a group of consulting engineers on our team, we have plumbing, mechanical engineers, a civil engineer, and a structural engineer. We use the town's report, deficiency report for the state of the existing pier, and with that, we replaced 10 piers, 10 pilings that are in the water. And the method of replacing those pilings with a hammer from a barge is, according to bidders, is what drove the price up significantly, out of range for what the budget is available for the project. So, we think we can reconfigure some of the, the piling installation method and potentially put that as an add alternate to ensure, or, you know, more likely come within the budget of the project and get the thing moving forward. The pier, you know, it's been there a long time, a lot of the, the 10 broken pilings or damaged pilings, but most of the diagonal bracing, the framing is, is almost not functioning with the decay of the bolts and nuts and the splitting of the wood. So, any work done to that pier is going to make it stronger. But the limiting factor, and one, another thing while we're rebuilding part of the pier is the ADA access for the pier. So, for it to become a public facility, it has to have ADA access so everyone in your community can enjoy, can enjoy the pier whenever they want. And so, those two things are the two big ticket items, but taking a lot off of that structural component of installing the piles with a hammer in the water would greatly reduce the price of the project, also increase the number of bidders. That was another thing. That methodology greatly reduced the amount, the number of people that were able to bid the project. And so, by narrow, or changing the way we're installing the pilings would open it up to a lot more bidders, which will also help the price.
So, you're recommending the third option?
Correct.
To change the scope of the work and rebid so we can get some reasonable bid.
Yes.
Chip, I don't know if the new commissioners understand, but I'm going to tell on my age here a little bit, but I was around when they were building the pier, I was around when they rebuilt the pier. And none of those operations were done with a hammer. They were all basically water jetted into, like, just like we put the pilings in the ground now for new homes. So, you know, you're, the engineers, I think, used a method there that, like you said, was by the time you get a boat and a captain and a, and a crew and all that stuff, it just runs into the millions of dollars. And I think with the, the rebiding this with a reasonable installation option and replacing the bracing and especially the hardware, as you said, would get us into compliance safety-wise to be able to possibly get it open soon. And that seems to be the general consensus of the, my constituents that I've talked to, that they want to move forward, because that is a question that our new commissioners will realize they will be asked continuously, if not already. So, can we, Madam Clerk, how, what do we need to do? We need to make a motion to ask Chip to rebid this for the board?
Yeah, that's how you would like to move forward, right?
Let's give every commissioner an opportunity to speak before we get a motion for made. And I'd like to ask you, sir, and Mr. Evans, during that bid consideration period, did any of the potential bidders communicate with either one of you and ever ask any questions or anything? What kind of communication took place between each of you and the potential bidders?
Yes, we had, we had several questions by the two bidders. And then we had basically statements from others that they weren't not going to be able to bid. And the amount of work out there in this region on the coast is also a factor in the amount of people bidding. But we got questions from both bidders, yes.
Mr. Evans, has anybody ever contacted you and asked you any information?
There were some questions on site, but there was nothing, we didn't have anything with us, but there was some, you know, some vague questions on site. Someone ever contacted you? Yeah, I wasn't able to contact you.
Do you have the commissioners got any questions?
Well, it was, it was my understanding that this work was kind of almost a bare-bones minimum to make it safe and ADA compliant, and that you looked at the engineering report, the underwater survey report. I think there were 14 severe piles and two that were major piles. So, I guess I've, I've got concerns about cutting the scope of a project that was engineered to make it safe.
Well, I don't think the scope would be the same. The installation method of the piles would be the different factor.
But the engineer specified those piles for a reason? The approach for a reason?
He specified the installation for, to get them in the ground as hard as he could get them in the ground. Is there a way we can back up, still make the pier significantly stronger? Yes, there is, by jetting them in.
I'm just worried about, this is a safety item.
Absolutely.
It's not someplace I'd feel comfortable cutting scope.
I, my projects, we deal with public safety every day, and it's not something we take lightly. And I wouldn't recommend it lightly either, just to fit within the budget.
So, Christie, I'm just wondering if you can explain to us why the bids or any other information wasn't provided in the packet so that we would have some information to make a decision on this, on what the scope is, what was going to be done, and what the bids were actually going to do?
This is all I have. If Heather has something else, then I missed that if we received any entire bid packages back, but this is all I had to go from is their certification that the bids have.
I mean, the bids must be, the actual bids from the...
We can get you a bid.
I mean, they should be in a package so that everybody understands it and the public has access to it. I mean, I don't know how we're supposed to make a decision when you're just giving us a number and we don't really know what the scope of the project is. And I would hesitate to move forward with any of this because I think we need a long-term vision of the pier and the property and what we're going to do with it. I mean, that's, that's kind of where I stand. We need a long-term vision for the whole thing before we start just putting $2 million band-aid on the pier.
Can I have another question? Do you have any insights in why the bids are so different, especially the add-on? It seemed like unbelievably different.
Well, I, I would say that the low bidder was the most responsible bidder. The high bidder was like, if I can get this for this money, I'll go down there and do it. You know, I don't know how familiar we are with building projects. The scope of the work is in our documents, the drawings and specifications which are available to anyone.
Not on the town website and not in our package that we're given to make a decision.
Okay, well, we're happy to share the drawings and specifications with you. When we get the bid, all we get is the number.
Okay.
And, and I guess the first...
Thank you, I would like to see all that.
Yeah. Our first scope of work for the town was to develop a master plan for the project, what is the best way to improve it and get it back open and have it be a family-oriented destination as it has been for most of it. So, we do have a master plan as well. We're lucky to be...
Mr. Park, if you've got anything?
Yes, sir, I do. I am a little concerned about reducing the scope because of the safety aspects. I understand changing the methods of work may substantially reduce the cost of this project. My question is, why didn't we do the value engineering up front and not be at this point? And I, Chip, you don't need to address that right now, it's okay, unless, you know, we are where we are. What I would like to do is, before we proceed on with, we're just going to value engineer and go out for another bid, I would like to have a meeting with you and town staff to go over your master plan and what the goals of this contract actually will be. I have a concern about the pier continuing to self-destruct, more so than getting it open this season. So, we may need to rethink this to do the structural work, however may be most cost-effective, to keep this thing from falling apart further, and then we may just have to move to getting it open back this season.
Mayor Holden, can I add a answer to...
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Pro Tem Myers' question from before that? That's why I had slid back over, but then we went into a different question.
You have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you. The staff has discussed this, and to further add on to his answer regarding your amount of difference in what the bids came in at, we actually think that the ones that are bidding on the project may be looking back to the very beginning of this process when the commissioners discussed it, when this was going to be a remodel, and there was a larger scope, and then it was phased, and now it's more of a repair for just the pier proper itself, and they're basing their bids on the previous, where it was going to be a total remodel instead of the current pier proper and repair. So, just to add on to what the staff kind of thinks may be going through their heads without speaking to them.
Thank you.
How long do you think?
Can Chip answer his, he didn't give him a chance to answer his question. I think Chip should be allowed to answer his question.
Okay, I just wanted to read, the scope is not being reduced. It's just the methodology of putting the pilings in the ground.
I understand that. I was just asking why we didn't have that methodology, that cheaper methodology in there up front. That was my question.
Well, our engineer felt like this was going to be the strongest method, and we based it on, you know, calculated professional opinion and experience, and did it, was it over budget for this project? Yes. Can we slide back, regroup, adjust, and try again? Certainly, if you desire.
So, if we do these 10 pilings, you said now, right? What's your estimate of when we're going to have to do another 10 and another 10? Is it going to be two years or five years or...
I don't have an estimate on that. It's, you know, I don't, we've lived at the coast for any length of time, it's, you know, it's mother nature, you know, act of God, as they refer to it in insurance contracts. But the pier stood for a long time. It seems to be in relatively good shape for its age, from my opinion, and could be strengthened greatly with this work and could serve this community for as long as it can last.
Any more questions, Commissioner? Floor is back to you, Ms. Christie.
Thank you, Chip.
Thank you, Chip.
So, to the commissioners on how they want to move forward?
Mr. Park, you're on.
Again, I would like to make a motion. I'm not making a motion for us to accept any bids. I... Uh, I think it's a good idea that Chip share the entire project scope, the entire drawing and stuff with you, I think you'll understand what the, the big picture is, that, you know, I guess him not giving it to us to have it for everybody to look at was probably, uh, not the best thing to do. However, I feel like we should move forward and ask him to, to give us another bid, to, to solicit for another bid, to do the, to, to do the work and get, and get it done, uh, like you said, it'll still be just as safe and we, uh, without having to go to excess. And I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, direct the staff to engage in value engineering, to reach, to, to re, to keep the same scope, but they change the work and totally rebid the project. And that's not something that it can be done immediately. Chip will have to get that to us, all of us, which he will give us the plan, the big-picture plans, and then we can come back with a, a reasonable number, if that is, uh, going to be a reasonable number, and then we can make a decision at that point.
All right, let's get a second on a motion forward and discuss.
Second.
You want to make the second?
Second.
All right, discussion, now you can continue.
I just, again, I, you know, I don't want to, to hold this up any, but then again, we're not going to approve anything or move forward with anything at this point until we're all comfortable. And I think the only way to do that is to get it, rebid it, and let us look at that, you look at the master plan, and then we can make a decision.
Further discussion? Yes?
I'm in agreement that we reject the bid for now, but I'm not ready to move ahead with the rebid. I want to sit down with Chip, look at the master plan, and reevaluate this project. I think, given the budget we have, the goal may be to just keep that pier from falling further apart. So I think it's premature to move ahead with a quick value engineering and, uh, then going back out for bid. I'd like to have a meeting to better understand this project. I do agree, we need to move quickly, but I, I want to have that meeting beforehand.
Okay, I need a little clarification, and Madam Clerk, you can help me on this. Make sure everybody understands the difference between a workshop and a meeting. We've got regulations we have to comply with, so, Madam Clerk, you want to review that so all of us are on the same page?
To be honest, there's really not much difference when it comes to Maya. I have to have...
From your end, yeah, but for the public.
Yes, it still would have to be in a public setting with a proper notice, and it would still have to allow for public comments, and, you know, you could sit here and have back and forth with, with Chip, but it would still have to be in a setting like this.
So that's formal, yeah.
Is that the same as a public information session, or is that different?
Really, there's only three kinds of meetings. There's only regular meetings, special meetings, and emergency meetings. So really, they all, every meeting that we have has to have an agenda, has to have minutes, has to have the quorum, has to, it's all basically the same thing. So it might be called a workshop, but in the details, it's the exact same thing as a meeting with all the, the same thing.
If, if three or more gather, it's going to fall under her guidelines.
Yeah.
This would have to be in, it would have to conform to open meeting laws, but I would consider it as a place where we can sit and discuss the options, the methods of work, and, and get smarter on the master plan that you have. And the sooner we can get on to that meeting, then we can proceed with what the next step may be.
Are you three in the driver's seat?
I, I'm on the same page. What, what I guess is getting me is, we've, we've heard discussion, we still don't really have a plan. I mean, the only plan I knew about was the one that the BOC voted on in January '22. I did not know Chip developed a master plan, I didn't know we had an option to remodel versus repair. So I think it's irresponsible to start spending without knowing where we're going, knowing what we want to get when we get there, knowing how much it's going to cost, knowing how we're going to pay for it, and knowing whether or not taxpayers support it and are willing to pay for it.
I think we all, I think we all agree on that, but what is the plan tonight?
Would you like a motion?
He made a motion.
Oh, I made a motion, okay.
And there was seconds, so we can call the question if you want.
I'm not asking for any approval of any bid, any amount of money. We're just going to get another bid to look at, along with the master plan. We can have that meeting, but in the meantime, he, he's got to go out and, and solicit for bids. And in the meantime, we can, uh, have a special meeting, add it to Tracy's meeting later, uh, in January or something like that. I don't see there's any problem with him trying to go out and get more bids, and like you said, with the, with the, a different style of, of, the, y'all, y'all's right, you put in figures all the time. And with that method, uh, we can get it done probably a whole lot cheaper. That's all I'm saying. And like you said, there'll be more people to actually bid on it, so there'll be some competition.
Yeah, I'm going to call the question.
All right, I'm in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 I suppose say no.
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 Motion fails. All right, who wants the floor?
I'll take it. I move that we reject the bids for the reasons stated, we won't be able to make a informed decision before they expire anyway, and that we start the process of developing a new plan by scheduling a special meeting.
I'll second. You said you just want to start a new plan?
I, I don't know what plan we have right now. I don't know if it's Chip's plan, the plan that was voted on by the board in January '22, if it's a plan to remodel, if it's a plan to repair, if it's a plan to extend.
Chip, did you not have a master plan that the commissioners instructed you to, to work on this project?
Yes.
Okay.
Has that been in the...
I thought that's what you had said.
I haven't seen it. Has it been published?
It's, you heard him say second.
We presented it at, um, the hall of honor.
Go, come on up, Chip. Do y'all have a problem with Chip coming back up?
No.
No, but you understand there's a motion on the table and it was second, and I have no problem with Chip coming up and giving us more information. I mean, that's the whole point of what we need. No, the motion was taken care of and he's asking questions.
Wait a minute, we had a, the motion got voted down, so what new motion are you talking?
I just made a motion and I seconded it.
I mo, I move that we reject the bids and we start the process of developing a new plan by res, by scheduling a special meeting.
And I said second.
Okay. So we in discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Chip.
So what is the problem? Do we have a problem? Chip, you want to come forward?
Okay. I can answer the question, or I can say that we presented the master plan to, at several commissioner meetings, just like this, I had the drawings on the TV.
It is open to the public.
And, uh, I can also say that we were very cognizant of the budget, and we had a, as simple an approach as we can, for the most part, um, to, to get the pier reopened to the public. So there's not like, there's some, I, I, you know, I, there's no hidden cash cow in there that's, you know, we're, we've done, we've just tried, we've done the bare bones, and, um...
Well, the master plan started with the whole scope of the project, which you presented, and then after much discussion and several meetings, we scaled it down to, to, to put it in phases, and the phase was, was, you mentioned, to get the pier open to the public.
That's correct.
And that's where we were at.
Yes.
The last project. I just want to clarify the, the plan.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for clarifying, because that is what happened. We, we developed what we thought the best use of the existing pier house with allowing the public to get on with ADA accessibility covered, both in the restrooms, both in the pier access, and then developing two, um, spaces that could be rented or run, or businesses that could operate that you might ordinarily find at piers in North Carolina. And, and then it was scaled back to be just the pier work, and we had to, we had to modify the building slightly to get people through the building in what we call, we're calling an open-air entrance through the building up onto the pier with the ADA ramp built on the ocean side of the pier house.
Okay. Let, let me see if I can, in my simple-minded way, are we not at the decision point of telling Chip to just stop, hold everything until you develop a new plan or not? Is that pretty much what you're saying, Tom?
My concern is that the financial reality of the pier is starting to emerge, and we need to stop and take a look at where we're going and what it's going to take to get there.
You just answered my question.
Yes.
You said stop.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so you don't want him doing any work?
That's correct.
Well, we don't want him to do any work on what is currently out there, but I think we need him to do a lot of work on creating a new plan.
Yeah, but you don't want the meter running with him working at this point, if that's what I'm understanding you're saying.
Yeah, that's the difference between, I guess, our two proposals, is to put him on hold while we figure out our plan or our vision versus, versus have him go ahead. I think that's the difference between the two motions.
So what's the difference in the price we've applied for the new plan when we already have a plan established?
I mean, if the, the folks would have attended the meetings and been as diligent as they are now, they would have seen what the plans are and they would understand what the plans are. But evidently, they didn't want to, and then they now they want to come in and change the whole deal. So that's, that's all I'm going to say about that.
Well, I think the original plan was $1 million out of savings, and now you're saying $2 million out of savings, and I think that the $2 million is just a Band-Aid, and we need a comprehensive plan for the property. I'm not opposed to the pier, I just want to see what the long-range plan is and how we can get there, being fiscally responsible with all the other things we have to do, which is make sure we keep standing on our beach and make sure our sewer systems are running. Well, nobody said we're doing, spending $2 million yet, and I don't think it's physically responsible to have him start over when this has been three years in the making. How much is it going to cost the town to start over for a new plan when we already have a current plan?
This, this group has already cost the property owners of Holden Beach nearly $900,000 in their stopping projects that were just about to begin, stopping loans that ended up costing us money. It's, again, we're, we're, we're to a point where, you know, we're, uh, we're, we're headed down the, the same path again where it's going to end up costing us more money just because we, you want to see it again. We should have come to the meeting.
Okay, we have a motion. Are you ready to vote?
I'm ready.
I'm in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say no.
No.
All right, it's three to two, the motion carries. Chip, I'm sorry, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Chip, for your time.
Yeah, wait here, promise. Hopefully you hear something today. Okay. Mr. Hewitt, do you understand where we are? As far as with the project?
Timeout.
Mr. Clemens, I know you're raring to get to the podium.
Well, I don't think this right here would be as complicated as much as you see, you know. It won't be, this won't be an easy one here. Um, this is an reference to amendment to the solid waste and recycle collection transportation disposal agreement. Waste standards, the town would have proposed amendment to the solid waste and recycle collection. Our current, uh, contract expires December the 31st of, uh, 2023. The amend, amendment would extend the initial term by two years with a end date of December 31st, 2025. Pursued to the term of our contract, current rates would be adjusted by 3%. Second picket rate is proposed to be increased from 1082 per month per car to 1115, and the curbside recycling rate would increase from 619 to 638. Staff would recommend approval. We really don't have any choice, we don't have anything other than decide, want to buy a garden truck, go in and trash collect and, and, and staff.
Any questions, commissioners?
Yeah, I've just got a couple, Chris, and I don't know if it's been corrected. I noticed in the amendment, this is the fourth amendment, and a couple places in the text it says it's the third amendment.
I, I had them change that, that'll be fixed before we sign.
Okay, cool, because I was going to say, just to approve subject to correction.
Those, uh, that increase, that happens every December the, the 31st, you know, to certain part of the contract.
Like you say, we, it's, um, it is what it is. Are we still going to need the roll-off service in Exhibit A? There's, uh, it says roll-off service, 30 cubic yard container, it lay down yard on Scotch bonnet. We still need that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Actually, that's like garbage we collect off the beach strand, stuff like that right there, and then we just throw it there to they, they hold it all.
All right, great, thanks.
Any more questions? All right, you looking for a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the fourth amendment for the waste disposal between Holden Beach and the Green for Life.
Second. Is there discussion? You none on our favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say no.
And I would like to...
It's unanimous, Madam Clerk.
I would like to say, we've had a few folks that's had a little bit of issues with the recycled carts, so you know, waste standards, just change the cover of the carts or something. And I was informed today that they missed a couple pickups, I'm going to keep making contact with them in the next few days and see if I can stop the phone from ringing for a, for a while. I'm just amazed at how things sometimes change for the better, I mean, for the worst. But that being said, thank you all, and you all have a good night.
Okay, we are on number 18 on the agenda, public comments on General Adams. Anything that you want to talk about on the agenda or off the agenda, if you raise your hand, be recognized, come to the podium, give us your name and information, and you've got some three minutes. I can't see the...
Tom.
Yes, sir, Ms. Pierce.
Yeah, just as a, a general comment, which overlays a lot of things here, I, uh...
Speak up, please, I got a hand that went up.
Sorry. I, I, uh, have heard the term owners on the island in a couple of cases, and I have used and others have used the term community. And I understand the distinction, and you do too. As owners, we pay for a lot, right? We own the property, business. The community is a larger area, surrounds us. And I just want to ask everyone to keep in mind, please, that we're islanders and owners of the island, but we're not isolationists, and there's a big difference there. We depend on this community. When you talk to the restaurants and the people that come here and pay taxes, et cetera, you know where I'm headed on this, we're not just isolated on this island. We may have only one bridge, but we're not isolated yet, and we don't need to be thinking totally in terms of what affects ourselves as islanders, but rather as the community, because we do depend on the community. Just an idea, thank you.
Thank you. I saw a black arm. There he is, Mr. Farm and Val.
Farmman? Pretty tired, Farm.
I'm only wearing this because I go right from here to fire department training, and this is a uniform. Now that we've raised our taxes and we have a lot of money laying around, one of the greatest things that I think this new board could do would be to invest in some sort of way that you can get this, what's going on here, out to everybody, out to all the, out to all the, uh, the owners of all the properties by some sort of video conferencing thing. I think that would probably be, uh, the, uh, the Holden Beach Property Owners Association has a pretty good system. I think we could get something in here, I think you could sit at home and watch it, let's say if COVID rears its ugly head again, or if you're out of town, or if you're never here and you're just a rental, if there's, if we have more money because we just, we just got our taxes raised, I think that would be a very instrumental thing to bring more people in and more, and you want to talk about a community where there's more voices rather than less. Thanks.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Farming?
Okay, I'm going to sound like I'm beating a dead horse.
Okay, I'm going to sound like I'm beating a dead horse, but we have 3.2 acres on which that pier sits. I've had numerous, way too many conversations with the lady who runs the Part of Green up in Raleigh. We've conversed until my blue in the face. We have to develop recreational activities on that property in order to support the Part of Green. And we have to have them done within five years. It isn't just the pier. I'm not fighting the pier. I'm fighting the fact that the town has not developed the strategy and a vision from which we can develop a plan to responsibly spend our tax dollars. More and more retired people are coming here to live. We're on limited incomes, so every time those taxes go up, we really have to cringe and tighten our belts. But we need to have a vision on what we want to do with that property because we're legally bound to make recreational facilities. Restrooms are not a recreational facility. A store is not a facility. A restaurant is not a recreational facility, okay? So we have to decide, and there's a whole list in the instruction under the Part of Green that tells us what we have to do. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I think there seems to be a big confusion on people's thought process. I don't think the homeowners don't want the pier fixed. It's that nobody knows your master plan. So, and nobody knows what you're going to do. So everybody's like, just stop and tell us what you're going to do. But that hasn't been done. And at the last meeting, the new people asked for 45 days to look at those plans that you have, that you haven't shown them, or us, the people. Because everyone I talked to wants to know what exactly is going to happen with all of the land. Because we would like something really nice for the town, including the pier, but maybe something else. So we want to see what your plan is. So if that could be out there for the public to look at, I think there'd be a lot less drama about the pier. Does that make sense? Thank you.
Thank you.
Rebecca Thompson, Clipper Ship Drive. And I called recently, a couple of days ago about the tires on the beach, reached Amy and she was so very helpful in laying out the plan for remediation of that problem and cleared up a lot of confusion on that. And I welcome the new members of the board and I would like to caution you to accept all help of information. And by doing the new bidding, we're not asking you to do anything, we're just asking to allow the bids to come forward so you have more information when you do meet. And I, I just can't imagine a commission that would not want all the information that they could possibly get. And that's really all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I'm Brett Shaver, 121 Tarpon. And I wanted, first of all, thank everybody that's sitting up there for, for being willing to be serviceable as a commissioner. It's a, it's a big responsibility, it's a lot of time and, and we all thank you for doing that. And I'd like to ask you a favor. Would it be nice if we didn't talk about the old board anymore or the new board? You're our board, we're depending on you and you need to depend on each other to move the town forward where it needs to go. So if you could do a favor, just let the board, not the old board, the new board.
Thank you. Who else wants to speak? Anybody? Yes, ma'am.
Regina Martin, 1032 Ocean Boulevard West, Holden Beach. I'd like to thank our new commissioners. I'd also like to say that I'm hoping by stopping what we started, that we don't end up spending a whole lot more money than we have already spent. I am very much in favor and I think a lot of people in this audience are in favor with going ahead and getting bids. I realize you all already voted not to do it. But I think it's a bad mistake. I think the longer you wait, the more money you're going to spend. And remember last meeting, everybody was talking about we were spending, we were spending, we were spending. Well, you guys are getting ready to go around and start all over again and start spending our money even more. That's my first point. My second point is, there are three members that are sitting on this board that are also sitting on another board called the HBPOA. I personally was a member of that board at one point. I was also a member of the HBPOA. It was my understanding that I needed to resign my position on the HBPOA. My concern is, and I don't know what their intention is, but I believe that they are held under North Carolina statutes to resign one of those two positions. Thank you very much.
Somebody else wants to speak? Chief?
Yeah, hold on a second, just, just a second. So the question you asked earlier about the armed robbery, because I was very curious and this may be half the information because I'm getting it by text message and trying to dig into it, but we were actually dispatched to an armed robbery at the Food Lion Shopping Center that it appears turned out to be more of a shoplifting situation than an armed robbery. But the county handled that report and everything, but we did respond to it system, but that's, that's the information I have now, so.
And if I may ask you to go ahead and explain the relationship, the support agreements between the Sheriff's Department and the...
Yes, we, we have a mutual aid agreement with the Sheriff's Office. You know, it, we, we assist them a lot with everything they've got going on because their area is so big and they're so busy and they provide a lot of assistance to us too when we have officers working by themselves and need officers to come over here and assist us. So we, we do have a very good working relationship with the Sheriff's Office.
So these calls are not all on the island then? These, some of these calls?
These are everything that we were dispatched to.
Okay, and you get dispatched to the mainland?
Correct, yes, sir. And usually our mainland dispatch is within the area of basically the callsway, Food Lion, you know, it's, it's, it's really the closest jurisdictions. I mean, unless it's, it's bad, we've been dispatched to bar fights down on Seashore Road to assist down there. So when they have different things, so it's really, it depends on the call severity type and how many officers for assistance they need. We're willing to provide that assistance because they also provide a lot of assistance to us.
Okay.
So, but that's, that's what that particular call was.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
Yep.
Who else wants to speak? Anybody else? About anything? Don't want to leave anybody out? I've already made one mistake from that tonight. Sorry. All right, we through with the number 18, the town manager's report. Ms. Hewitt?
Yes, sir, I'll be brief. Just wanted to let everybody know that regarding Block Q, we don't have a letter of engagement yet returned from the apparent lowest bidder based on the board, the board's award to them last week. So we'll see what comes back from them. But interestingly enough, we were contacted over the weekend by North Carolina Wildlife in reference to their plans on renovating the boat ramp and have a scheduled meeting tomorrow afternoon to compare notes and to see what, just, just what's up there with them. So we'll be meeting with them on Wednesday afternoon to review what they got and show them what we got. We'll see what comes out of that. The sewer lift station improvements, Congressman Rousers' office advised, has advised us that the EPA has awarded the community project funding of almost $2.7 million to the town of Holden Beach for the lift station upgrade. And we're coordinating with the Division of Water Quality to get the same type, to get the same answer concerning the North Carolina $2 million budget appropriation. So we have made that application for those funds and are, are waiting to see how that comes out. Those two items together will go a long way in scoping what the total requirement for any financing may be. And I'm assuming that while the EPA wanted to get their stuff done before Christmas, we're, we're probably not going to see the, the same turn time from, on the North Carolina money because that budget broke later in the year and they're still getting things together. The tire apocalypse, that, that 1,000 tires that washed up, you know, based on the storm that we had over the weekend, you wouldn't believe that we had 1,000 tires on the beach this morning because the Division of Marine Fisheries, we, we contacted them yesterday afternoon, mid-afternoon, had a patrol officer here. By dark, there were a couple crews and some equipment starting to throw tires and then today it looks like half of Moorhead City showed up and with plenty of equipment and crews. And I believe that when we, we looked at it later on this afternoon, that just about every, everything had been cleared off the beach. Now, we're probably going to have some, we don't know, there's probably still some that are bumping along. There'll be onesies, twosies that, that wash up and everybody can help us out to get them off the beach if you call up here and let us know. But I believe that the lion's share of all of those tires has been hauled off today. So thanks for the Division of, of Marine Fisheries for getting that done. And want to call out not only the crews, but Mr. Lefler, the deputy director, is the one that, that contacted me yesterday and got all that stuff going. So it looks like to me that we got most of them off the beach. And I know Mr., Mr. Clemmons was looking at those tires going, Greg, Dave, it's going to take me a month to get that off. So glad we were able to connect with the Division of Marine Fisheries. And by the way, that, that's an experimental reef from back in the 70s and every time that we get a southeast wind, that's what shows up in onesies or twosies, but this has probably been the most that I've seen. I know that, and in talking with Chris, he said it's the most that he's seen. We, we've just...
Were we the only one or did Ocean Island, Oak Island get?
Ocean Island got about 60 and Oak Island is unknown at this time. But that reef lies southeast and just when it, the, the wind is right, it comes and it starts about amazing grace and then just strings on down the beach. We're glad it is gone. Want to give everybody a heads up. If you're, if you've become, if you've really started using the pier facilities because of the modular restroom and its, its availability, we're going to have to take it offline for the season. It's a, that is a three-season restroom, we're going to have to winterize it. So we're going to have to take it offline so that the pipes don't bust until warmer weather. We'll get out of blast on that. The, we will have porta potties down there that will accommodate ADA and special needs, but it will be locked for the foreseeable future until it warms up and we don't have to keep it winterized. And that is all I have for now.
Commissioners, have any questions? I'm Mr. Hewitt.
I, I do have a question on the Block Q, just to understand what the first one says. So has the contract been signed?
No. We sent it to them with the commissioner's letter of engagement and it has not been returned to us. We do not have a contract engaged with them.
So when it comes back, will it come before the board for approval?
No, that, that was the contract for them to sign it.
And what's this meeting on Wednesday? Is that something that we can attend or should attend to learn more about what's going on down there?
We don't know what they're going to come tell us. This is really, it's a staff issue. There goes, there goes the, the kind of the discussion on, you know, what's the commissioner's involvement and what qualifies as the meeting and then what's the, the staff supposed to do, what's the staff's role in it? And that's a question that has existed for as long as I've been in local government. I think that this meeting right here is not for the governing board, it's for the staffs to do it and let us bring it back to you. I don't know what they're going to call it about that.
Okay, just wondering.
Is that meeting up to the public?
It's, it's a, it's a remote staff meeting. It's a...
I think he's asking about the boat ramp. She's talking about Block Q.
No, they're all in the same.
It's the same.
They're all in the same.
Okay.
You mentioned it was a meeting about boat ramp.
The Division of Marine Fisheries is going to meet with us to talk about their plans for renovation at the boat ramp. I think that's a staff meeting. No, it's not.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yeah, I was just going to add on to what he was saying. It was a team's invite to the staff. So I don't, I'm in agreement that it wasn't open to the public because it's a special invite that they've given to the staff through teams.
That is a DOT, not a DOT, state of North Carolina property, not a town property.
So when we find out something, we'll, we'll bring that back.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions, commissioners?
David, you mentioned at the last commissioner's meeting about the people moving the, the gravel whatnot out of the way of the paving project. I noticed that some homeowners have gone and moved gravel, railroad ties back. I think that maybe you might just want to make a reminder to people that this is something that, that's going to be, that needs to be done and follow suit with people that have been proactive in doing that.
Okay.
Any more commissioners wanting to speak on that? All right, if not, we're going to go to number 20, Mayor's Comments, going to be short. Those of you that are drilling and anxiously waiting an opportunity to enjoy the food over here at the table to my right under the TV, that will be immediately after the meeting here. So help yourself and socialize and, and enjoy all that. And I would like to thank, I apologize for referring to past and present your comments earlier. Thanks to all the board members that have served not only in the last two years, but all the previous years and the new board members that are launching their bodies and minds into the future of the unknown as an elected official. I promise you, you will enjoy a lot of excitement. You will meet new friends that you've never known and new opportunities. So we're all here to make this a better place. So hopefully we can get through the future and do the best for the town of Holden Beach and everyone involved. I thought it was interesting this morning at low tide, as high, as the high tide was during the storm that we endured this weekend, this morning, the pier pilings at the Halsted Fishing Dock or Community Dock, what do we call that? Park? Halsted Park? All of the dock was high and dry. All those pilings were out of the water this morning and you very seldom ever see that. So we had one extreme over the weekend and another extreme this morning. So, and especially those extreme low tides, I don't know what tomorrow will bring, but those extreme low tides are wonderful news to the shell seekers on the beach. So I'm sure everybody will take advantage of that. But overall, I'd just like to say thank you for allowing me to serve another two years and allow me to work with these people at this table here this afternoon. I think we can move forward and do what's best for the town and hope that all of us will contribute as best we can. And let's have a wonderful holiday season and get started in 2024 on the right foot. And thank you all for being here. And as far as recognizing the speaking order for this meeting, we will go by the seating because we haven't changed. January, when everybody's... January, when everybody's properly seated per the instructions of the clerk, then we'll follow that seating arrangement. But right now, the person on my media right, that chair will be the first person to speak when we come to this part of our meetings. So tonight, Mr. Smith, you have your floor first, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We are number 21 on the agenda now.
Brian, I appreciate your comments. We do need to operate as the new Holden Beach Board of Commissioners. It would really be a, a, a good thing if we could all work together for the, the greater good of Holden Beach. But my, my growing concern is with the, the terms they've used here, our new commissioners have used in the, in the past as a team. And, you know, I thought a team meant everybody. But in this case, the team isn't everybody. And I think with the, the way things went this evening, it's pretty easy to see that the, the team has their own agenda. And I'm just going to leave it at that. I think the public will see, see it as we move forward. But I want to thank everybody that came out this evening. It's really nice to see this many people here. And if we'd had this many people here when we were going over the pier plans and working on this for years, then I believe everybody in here would know exactly what's going on. But everybody's busy and can't be here on a Tuesday night at 5:00. But we, we, we work really hard, and we're glad that y'all are here to, to be part of this meeting tonight, as well as the ones that are listening online. Our staff does a great job. Y'all have done a great job all year. Chris, you've been battling the water. Chief has kept us safe. Our staff has got us grants. Tim's keeping us moving on the proper way to build stuff. Our accounting department got kudos for their, their budget this year. We couldn't do it without you guys, and we really do appreciate it. In finishing, I just hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving. And I'm looking, I hope everybody enjoys this, this holiday, Christmas season. There's a reason for this season, and we need to keep that in mind. We need to be thankful that we get to have the blessing of living here at this beautiful place. And everybody really just needs to get along and love each other. And that's it for me, sir.
Ms. Thomas?
I just want to thank Brian and the judge for their hard work for the time that they were on the board. And I wanted to thank everyone who voted for me and just say that I'm going to do my best to put the homeowners first and make sure that the, we do the best thing for the island. And happy holidays. Thank you.
Doctor?
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. It's good to see the community getting involved. I appreciate it. I want to thank the staff for a well-done 2023. You guys have worked hard, all the departments. I think things moved real smooth. We got a lot done. And I hope everybody has a safe holiday and a happy new year.
Ms. Purvis?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. This is your Board of Commissioners. You guys need to show up and speak up. And those of you that do, I really appreciate it. We need to hear from you. I'd like to also thank everyone who supported me in the election and gave me this opportunity to serve. I would like to echo Rick's comments. We do need to function as a board. And we'll probably go through those stages of storming, norming, and performing. Lastly, I'd like to wish everyone a safe and Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and I look forward to seeing you all next year. Thank you.
Tom?
So I don't know if this council is my first meeting or my first half meeting, but it's a pretty big half. I'm honored to be sitting here. I intend to do my best to fulfill the responsibilities of being in this position. I want to thank everyone for your support, and I wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy Holidays. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anything else, Madam Plurk? Have we performed our duties? All right, thank you, every... All right, thank you, everyone. Is there a motion we adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion we adjourn.
Just second.
Second.
Motion made, the second. To adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.